Good evening, everyone, and welcome again to the main 9th Borisfeld Regular Board Meeting. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Roll call of proceeds, all my fellow board members are present tonight. For the good of the order, board discussion, do I have any discussion? And we'll move on to opportunity for students to be heard. I don't see any students here this evening. Opportunity for the public to be heard. If anybody would like to be heard, please come up and state your name, and we'd be happy to listen. Okay, then we'll move on to our reports and presentations, starting with the technology initiative.
Okay, so I'm gonna introduce Shawna. And so Shawna is being so nice tonight to help us kind of walk through the presentation and talk about the one-to-one initiative. And as you know, you know, we realized with COVID that we had to do a giant jump in the technology realm very quickly. And we have, as a district, and we've received a grant of $250,000, got us four hundred Chromebooks. You know, we've come a very long way. Shawna is our instructional technology special- integration. I created the title. Integration Technology Specialist for the district. And so she does all the embedded PD for us, really helps out with these initiatives. And so tonight Shawna's kind of gonna talk about our one-to-one initiative and where we are and what some of the specifics are.
Kind of took away what I was gonna say.
You're still, you're gonna be blowing us away.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak on behalf of the Technology Committee. There's a couple of us here, so if I miss anything, I expect you guys to let me know that I did. I just wanted to let you know how we got to where we are this year and where our plans are going forward. And when I say "we," I mean the Technology Committee. So like Frank said, pre-pandemic, we had Chromebooks on carts, teachers checked them out. And it was teachers that were interested in using it and that were comfortable in using it. But not, not everybody was using it. Then March 2020 hits, and everybody is forced to use it. And we did a, we did a pretty good job. We, we rolled with the punches and the district worked really hard to keep up with the needs of, of the kids. And many, many things were created with technology that haven't been used in the past. Many innovative things are being used. This year, our goal as the Technology Committee is to continue that momentum and to be able to use those same resources in, in classrooms and then move even further. And as Frank said, we have, we were able to get 400 new Chromebooks in the hands of students this year. So, you know, I think middle school is basically one-to-one at this point. Three through five is one-to-one. High school's very close. So it just made sense, as we're sitting in the Technology Committee, creating the three-year instructional technology plan that we have to submit to the state, that this is where we are. We're ready to move forward. We're ready to start this one-to-one initiative. Technology integration becomes a priority. The thought of using technology, not just as a substitution for what has always been taught, but integrating it as an enhancement and to enhance. So with that being said, as we create the Instructional Technology Plan, we decide to move forward with a more structured, more coherent plan, including a K-12, including a one-to-one school home initiative for six twelve. And then going beyond, what we did, we looked at a lot of school districts in the state and just kind of see how their rollouts were done, because one-to-one is not a new thing. And so we have the benefit of a lot of trial and error from other districts. And so we kind of took what worked for people and were able to adapt it for what's gonna work for Borisfeld. That being said, it's a new process, and with any new process, it needs to have that reflection and to be able to tweak it as necessary. Part of our instructional plan is to work with Professional Development Committee to kind of see where we need to, where we have needs for professional development to make sure that we are keeping the focus on, you know, enhanced engagement through technology integration. We also are creating a technology inventory tool, so we know where every Chromebook is at all times and what state it's in at all times. And then we can keep a track of repairs that need to be made and then kind of work that through our replenishment process. How does that work? The tracking device is actually, has been created by Rachel Rubitzky, who is part of our NAREC team, and it's, it's amazing. She's, she's worked on, she's still working on the case of it. But it is, it's gonna allow anybody that has hands on a Chromebook to be able to look up an asset tag and find out which student it is assigned to or if it's in a repair process or things like that.
Okay, so it's more like, I'm signing it, not actually physically tracking the device?
Oh, no, yeah, it's not like a GPS thing. It's, it's more like, I have, you know, I'm looking, I found a Chromebook in the locker room. Who does it belong to? Anybody will be able to go and look up that asset tag and see who it belongs to.
When I had that thought, when you said what state is it in, she meant whether it's working or not.
Oh, I apologize, I apologize. I really hope that there are not gonna be another state.
So, we are not tracking GPS, like the Chromebooks and where they go.
That's a good question, though, because we could, you know, we're being tracked everywhere, right?
But the other thing, but the other good thing about this program is too, let's say a kid forgets their Chromebook and they need an extra one. Well, having an easy tool to say, yup, here, we're gonna give this to you, then we're gonna switch it out. That's key, because right now we don't have that. So that's where everything kind of gets lost and jumbled. And this, this program will allow for us to have a nice streamlined asset control program.
It also is going to talk nicely. I'm kind of going ahead of myself, but it's gonna, I always say the word "play nicely" with our student information system, eSchool. So it's gonna be uploaded into eSchool, so anybody that has access to eSchool, faculty, will be able to look up the Chromebook and know exactly where it belongs. You're not worried. All right, so a general overview, in K-5, it's gonna look a lot the same, except the carts are gonna be dedicated to homerooms. And we will be encouraging teachers to assign an actual Chromebook to a student, so they'll be using the same one all year long. They will stay in school unless there is a need for them to be checked out to go home. That's not any different than what happens at this point. Except we will be one-to-one grades two through five. And then in K-2, they'll still have carts, but they will be, there won't be a spending of them.
Two through five or two through?
Two through five.
So K and one would?
Would be, would have about 10 to 12, enough to run a center.
Because two, they start making the market and the slides.
Exactly. Very important. And six, 12 is where the difference comes in. The Chromebooks will be distributed in the fall. They will be, they'll be home and school years. We do expect that there will be a learning curve for this, but the expectation is that the kids will bring their Chromebooks to school and back home, back and forth, just like they do any other class material. Like, you know, in the middle school, they have the dot finder, they go back and forth every day. High school, they bring homework and everything. So it's gonna, we expect that there will be a learning curve. And like Frank said, we do have a supply of boners that we'll have available if somebody forgets. Students will be given a Chromebook, a case.
I brought the case, so everyone can kind of see it. These are the ones that we currently use. We've actually vetted them out pretty well. I think Jen Drafts was like stomping on these a couple of times just to confirm it. So these are the Chromebook cases, and they're really nice, because it becomes a little carrying case for our, the kids do. And if you see them in one school, they're, they're carrying them just like this. It's pretty cool. These are the cases.
And a charger. Again, we'll have boners if, for some reason, the expectation is that students will bring their Chromebooks to school fully charged. Obviously, you know, there'll be a learning curve, there'll all be days, but that won't happen, so we'll have boners available for that, for to cover those days. Okay, so distribution, the logistics of distribution, just distribution will be handing them out on locker nights prior to school beginning. We will communicate the logistics of that via school messenger and in the principal from our mailing. It'll, it'll be an addition to there. Any remaining Chromebooks for students or families that are not able to come to locker night, they will be delivered to first-class classes on the first day of school. They will not go home until we have a signed contract on hand, just for her.
As Shawna's going into this, I just wanna, I think it's important that, like Shawna said, the tech committees worked really hard. Shawna's worked really hard on this. But this is our first year. So let's be honest, we're gonna plan to our best ability, but we know it's not gonna go perfect. So, you know, this is our stage one, you know, and as we go forward, maybe some things won't work out, or the locker distribution won't work, then we just change it and, you know, modify. But based off of best practices and with the tech committee discussed, these are, right now, the best practices that we've seen in other districts and make the most sense to be able to roll out when we start this program.
Another thing that we spoke about when we were creating the Instructional Technology Plan is the idea that students should be, have access to learning anytime, anywhere. This is a goal for the, the New York statewide technology plan, as well as the US technology plan, that students have access to learning anytime, anywhere through the use of technology. With that in mind, we have decided that students will continue to use their Chromebooks over the summer to be able to pursue passion projects and just to have the ability to have that resource available to them. Of course, this is up to the discretion of the administrators. If we have students that are not following the expectations throughout the year with those Chromebooks, then the administration has the discretion to not, you know, allow that over the summer. And then parents also have the opportunity to opt out if they are not comfortable having that Chromebook throughout the summer.
Would this, I'm not trying to put a suggestion out there, this is not a suggestion, but would this be something that would encourage teachers to give over the summer meeting or work projects to students or not?
This hasn't been a discussion, and that might be a discussion, well, that might be a discussion that can be brought up at a regular meeting or I can bring up at another time, but we haven't discussed that. Right now, it's really about passion projects and the opportunity for kids to be able to, you know, if they wanna do something. My, my daughter the other day was making a slideshow with a friend online, just for fun, you know? And this is the idea that we want, to be able to do this.
Okay. Will that also be just for summer or if kids opt out, they don't, they just wanna use their own?
So, we're not gonna allow other kids bringing their computers any longer, because it is a network safety issue. So because they're logging onto our network, they're doing those things, and we have to have, you've seen all the cyber issues and cyber attacks and all the different things going on. So now that we have the ability for people to have these, we are gonna have them use ours in school. If they don't wanna bring it home, I'm sure we can work out another situation for that. But in school, we are gonna require kids to use our technology.
So that opt-out would be for summer? So the last week of school, we'll be collecting them from eighth graders and from 12th graders. So the idea is that the Chromebook will follow the student throughout middle school. So they'll get a Chromebook in sixth grade, and they'll turn it in at the end of eighth grade. And then on the last week of school, we'll take those Chromebooks from the eighth graders and we'll give them their high school Chromebook, and they will have that throughout their high school career. And so then we'll, we'll collect those, those ones from the 12th graders, and then they will be, if they still have life in them, they'll be moved to, you know, in 12th graders.
Questions, questions? What, what will we do for families that maybe don't have internet or Wi-Fi at home?
We have Kichit Wi-Fi systems, and we will give those out to families. So we have-
Do that now?
Kichit, yeah, we still have it. So I have, we have 15 that we currently pay for and another 15 that are on hold. So they're here, and all we have to do is turn them back on. So we have the ability for our families to have Wi-Fi. And if we need more, we'll purchase more.
So this is a big investment for the district, so we wanna make sure that we're able to protect it. We will be offering an optional Chromebook maintenance program, kind of like an insurance program for any repairs that need to be made. So this would be a $26, and again, this number is based on the research that we've done from surrounding districts. And, you know, what they, this optional maintenance program, how they run that. So this would be a one-time fee per Chromebook, so there'd be a, you'd be allowed to, you know, opt-in for the $26 for your middle school Chromebook and $26 for your high school Chromebook for, for check. This is invoice payable through My Schoolbook's cash or check. And we will be finalizing this over the summer. This is a draft of what the B schedule would be like if there were repairs that were needed. If you take out the optional Chromebook maintenance program, the first two incidents would be no charge and then incrementally, incrementally, as the incident goes through. So that's with, and then this is without. And just the first and second incident would just be something that would be charged, for invoice.
So is this a family's option?
Family's option, yes.
Okay. And then will we be able to basically insure?
It is.
So will we be able to cover the cost of insurance for families that?
Yes.
Or which is a hardship?
Yes, absolutely. We definitely talked about that in our, our meetings. That's part of the handbook, so absolutely.
Any questions on this?
So we wanna make sure that we're able to catch any kind of repairs that are needed prior to them becoming, you know, catastrophic to the, the Chromebook. So the Technology Department will be conducting audits throughout the year. What that would look like is, you know, we'd sit in the cafeteria and have the kids come and bring their Chromebooks to us or, you know, if English department is, is kind enough to let us come in and sit on, in on their classes for a day, we can pull the Chromebooks and just kind of put our eyes on it and just make sure the Chromebooks are where they're supposed to be, they're with the right student, that there's not keys missing. So we can just kind of catch things before it gets, like I said, catastrophic. Any repairs that are necessary are gonna be handled by the Technology Department as well. So I kind of wanna move into, away from the logistics and into kind of the pedagogy of, you know, we have these Chromebooks. What are we gonna do with them? Is it just gonna be worksheets on these Chromebooks? And, you know, sometimes, yes, sometimes that makes sense. But this is from the US National Education Technology Plan. And it talks about going from, the difference between closing the technology divide, where kids have, you know, technology in their hands, and the technology use divide, where kids know what to do with it. So they're not just, you know, having, going through passive content. That they're, they're, they're engaging in creative, productive, lifelong learning. So this is an example of passive content. This probably looks familiar. Do you have any teenagers? Fourth graders or second graders? I don't know. It looks familiar to me. So this would be an example of passive content, just scrolling and, and then possibly doing a digitized worksheet, right? So this maybe sometimes has a purpose, but it's not where we wanna sit. We wanna be moving forward. And so this would be, these are examples of active use. And so you're gonna see a couple of models of professional development pedagogy that I wanna show you really, just very quickly. I won't bore you with it, but it all comes down to the same thing. It's collaboration, creativity, critical thinking, you know, just engaging with the technology rather than being passive about it. And that's where we wanna go. So this is a model that we have been using in the past couple of years and will continue. It's called the SAMR model. Basically, it's taking us deeper. You, so depending on what the, the illustration you see, you're either going deeper or you're going up a ladder, so whatever you like to think about. But it's going from that substitution, digitized worksheets, down to the collaboration, all of those. They're really good stuff, you know? And another model, BOSSEs. And part of my role as the Technology Integration Specialist, Instructional Technology, the TOSA, but part of my job, I don't know. Part of my job is to coach faculty through this process of going from either up the SAMR ladder, ladder, or, you know, down deep in the water, however you wanna look at it. And the way that we can do that is always to be reflective in our teaching, and our faculty here is amazing at being able to do that. And so these are indicators of impactful technology use that we will be using to kind of see where we are and then set goals for ourselves and then move toward, you know, toward that deeper meaning that we want. Again, you see those keywords, collaboration, communication, critical thinking, creativity. That's what we want. Questions?
I have a question. We can't quite remember the software we're using in school to monitor kids on the Chromebooks that we decided we wouldn't use when they're at home.
Right, like speed.
And will that, is anything changing with that?
No, not at this time. We have no plans to change that. And part of the contract that we're drafting up is making sure that parents are informed that there is no, we will not be monitored when they're at home. So kind of, you know, we, we give them the ready-to-use, that kind of thing.
The critical thinking part, I feel like that was part of a conversation about a course or something in terms of critical thinking and reading media, reading information of kids. I'm assuming there will probably be some sort of bumpers on the internet as far as content that is accessible?
We, well, we have a, we have a filter that, you know, in our district, as far as the critical thinking user.
But, but there's still the ability to read, when, um, some courses have a, a, a re, when you read something, you analyze it to see what, how it's been written. So that would be part of what some teachers would be doing.
Absolutely. It'd be part of our digital citizenship.
Yeah.
Yes.
Consider, like, consider the source too.
Absolutely. The octopus in a tree lesson, that, you know, I think lots of people have seen this, they get that. There's a, I don't know if you've ever seen it. Google it if you haven't, the octopus in a tree lesson. The kids have, it looks like a real website, and kids think it's real. And, you know, it's talking about this octopus that lived in a tree in Seattle, so.
I've been really impressed with this presentation.
Oh, thank you.
Really well done. I, I'm so thorough and I didn't know all this was going on. How long have you guys been working on it?
We've been working the whole year, this whole year, but I think that more than that, we've been working up to it for the past couple of years. It's definitely been the direction that we've wanted to go, and, but thank you, I appreciate it.
Tim, I think, absolutely on the right track. I think the Technology Committee actually started this conversation two years ago. And, you know, they worked diligently on this, and Shawna's done a really good job putting this together and moving forward with it. But really, it's been a two-year conversation.
Terrific.
Good job, Shawna. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, board discussion, potential exit survey questions. Can you breathe?
So everybody was sent these. It's also on the agenda. And I also made some copies for people who don't have a computer with them, or it's a bit easier to reprint. So I did have that on some people. So really, I just wanted to have a conversation with the board, how you felt on these, if you wanna change them, if you wanna keep them, and what you felt about these questions.
I only have one question. Is this a choose one, or can you choose multiple responses?
For, yeah, for like number four?
Yeah, take one of those. Yeah, yeah. You're voting us on it because-
It's, it's choose one.
You can only choose one?
Yeah, but we can put more than that.
You might want to for some days, but-
Yeah, number four, number five. There were some that said select all that applied, but, you know, nine. And I felt like number four and number five, she'd choose all that applied.
If you guys like that.
They might not tell you exactly what you want. I understand. You might ask, you know, what moved you the most? Or what would you rank these, or something like that, why you voted the way you did. But it could be that it's more than one thing.
And number 11 should have an other, I thought.
So the process would be someone comes in, they vote, and it would be handed this right there?
So, no, so they actually don't get handed. So the process is gonna be, they come and vote, and then there is a station over there where there's a sign that says, you can take the budget exit survey. There'll be computers set up and there'll be paper, and then they'll have the choice to be able to take it or not. So it's really based on voter choice, if they wanna take it, yeah, it's volunteer basis.
So like when they come to sign their name, will they be pointed in that direction, like, oh, and there's a survey if you-
Yeah, yeah, there'll be a sign. I mean, it'll be pretty evident of where it is.
I mean, just letting them know that it, it exists.
It exists, yep, and we're asking for student volunteers.
Oh, good.
So we're hoping that we can get some student volunteers to say, hey, don't forget, we have the budget survey.
Perfect, that's what I was-
Yeah, cookies, you know?
I think like the gift shop in Disney, you gotta go by there, you know?
Yeah, but we're gonna have students running that, running that and being there and not have adults or anyone, because we're not involved. BOSSEs is doing all the, the collection of it, and it's all anonymous, and the kids will put them in if they do the paper survey.
No, yeah, numbers 12 and 13, I think, should prefer not to answer. Should be an answer option. But that's, this is my opinion, I'm-
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I just-
But couldn't you just skip it?
Not on the required.
Yeah, and then the, if yes, where do your children attend school? A different school district is almost confusing. It might just be a school outside the district. Instead of saying a different school district, because it could be a private school. There aren't no others. It's either, a private school to me is not part of the school district. It's just a school in another location. They don't, they're not governed by the Board of Education.
I think I'd replace what you just said, the next school, with a private school.
But, well, you can pay for a district.
Well, they're, they're, they live here, but they're voting here, so. But then they have in mind their kids are in other districts, and they may attend that district as opposed to a private. You could say private school or other districts, which maybe-
Or a school outside the district.
I think it's a little confusing, that's the reason.
Yeah.
A school outside the district covers-
I think school outside of the district, yeah.
So I'm in favor of removing question 10, because I think it insinuates that you would have, we would have to exceed the tax cap levy to avoid cuts to current programs. And I, one, I don't think we need to go there, and two, I, I don't think that's accurate.
I agree. I was gonna, I was gonna ask, what would we do? It is all people say no, you know?
I think I see what you're looking at.
So I have to be honest. So this came from BOSSEs Communications, and they compiled the most common used questions from other districts. And then I said, okay, give me the most common used questions that were utilized by your BOSSEs communication system, and then we'll have the conversation. So I'm good with any edits, changes, however you like.
What if it didn't say, in the future, would you? But what if it said, would you ever support a budget that exceeds the tax levy cap?
Is it really needed?
I think that's the question that you have to ask.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I think that it would be up to us to decide that it was necessary and then educate.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I just don't think it's valid.
Move 10.
And I did, I've got 11 to 10, I have.
Yep, got that.
On number four and five, I don't, I don't like the wording of, I trust the district leaders to make the right decisions for students. Like, every single decision, right? What's right?
And so what would you like that?
Rachel?
It, it feels like that's more broad than a budgetary question.
I, I trust the district leaders to make decisions. To make decisions, good, yeah.
Well, we're asking a question about the budget, but we have an answer in there about students, right?
Yeah, I would take out for students. I'd just say, I would trust district leaders to make the right decisions.
And then I do not-
Make the right decisions when preparing a budget?
And then number five would, I do not-
Take out for students.
Yeah, I did. I'm gonna go over all the changes after we're done. I'm going to go over all the changes after we're done. Make sure that I have everything that was said. Number five, I do not trust district leaders to make decisions.
And question one?
Right decisions.
Well, is it, are we going to ask the right decisions? Because it's not what is right. So what would you like those to say? I do not trust district leaders to make.
Hey, Murphy, I just do not trust district leaders, period. I do not trust the decisions of district leaders. I do not trust the decision, I do trust.
I disagree with the decisions made by district leaders or I agree with the decisions made by district.
In one case, it's a trust question. In another case, it's a aligned question. Then you take out the question.
I kind of like your edit, Frank. I agree with the decisions of district leaders. Agree?
Period.
Or I do not agree?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You could say. Yeah, so it's agree or trust. And if you, agree is the way we want to go first. Good word. Trust is a big question. Agree is a good one.
Of question one, I just wasn't sure what value we get from that.
Don't we have that data? Don't we get that data totally from when this ends?
I don't think we get the data, like, where we get our most people.
We do?
Jessica, did they give it to us? Okay, and we can take one out.
Well, I mean, if it's helpful, I'm just curious.
We just saw them in other times where people want to know if we get big onslaughts at the end of the night, yeah.
I think it's helpful. If it's helpful, go for it.
Match up to the sponsors.
Right, because I mean, if we're seeing where we stand, how many people come between two and four, we change that eventually.
Along those lines, we're past. We're not stacked totally. We're not bound to two to nine, right? Other districts do earlier or later. Should we be asking a question about whether the times offered a vote were convenient?
Rob said, should we be asking the, you know, asking are the times offered a vote convenient?
That's a better question, I'd answer that.
Well, I think both provides different types of information. Maybe, you know, like, one, we have statistics. But also, understand that. Change, I don't think that's even a.
It has to be.
I think all you're trying to do with that question is figure out, are we getting an early onslaught of yes votes, no votes, coming at the end, coming in, you know? Actually, we're just kind of looking at an analogy of where that's ordered, I guess.
But how does that help you?
Driving by Bethel.
I don't know if it does.
They have to be between six, seven, nine.
Seven hours.
Really, they came there.
Size, size of the day. Right, we're coming.
Yeah, they're.
I think those are probably parents who work. I mean, it's guesswork, right?
I was gonna say, it's kind of dangerous to assume it means anything.
Right.
I think you're right.
If we have the data, why don't we just take out number one? And then just change.
I think the shorter the survey, the happier the survey responded.
Check it out, go.
Check it out.
Question on number 15. How many zip codes do we have?
Three. We have three towns.
No, I know three towns, how many zip codes?
I have no idea.
I couldn't tell you that, but I don't have enough done with that.
But we did the towns because, as of zip codes, because it's easy to know, Town Burn, Gildwin.
But there's 12 zero zero nine is a zip code. And isn't that ultimate?
One, two, one, five, nine. It's a bit different. Four is Gildwin, the town's.
One, two, nine, six, one, two, one, five, nine.
It's on this road, you have like three zip codes.
You have a door. Is it good off that road?
It depends on how, how 1020 do you want to get into the data?
Well, I was just saying, if we only like seven zip codes and it's not that many more towns, maybe it gives us a little bit better. But if there's too many zip codes, that's confusing.
Gilderlin must have pluses.
Well, not necessarily within our district.
Yes.
Because there's almost.
Yeah, it's, when you go down Plumville, like, I would say into Gilderlin's building.
So I don't know, maybe it's not worth it if there's too many of those. Just a question.
Any other questions?
Oh, do we want to try to, I'm not suggesting this is necessarily a good question, but see how people feel about attending capital project?
I would take it right away from that.
Okay.
Yeah, I just don't feel comfortable because we haven't really understood what the tax, you know, what the tax impact, if there's going to be any, what that capital project could be. We haven't confirmed if there's bedrock out there or not. So it's like, I don't think we're ready for that.
Sure.
I mean, one. Would it be helpful to know how long some of these reside? In terms of seeing if there are trends where people who live here longer tend to support more or not? No? I think that's a good question.
I like it.
I like that question.
Want to do it?
Yeah. How long have you resided in the school district? So, and it was the, it was the capital project and it spurred that along to sit, I don't know, people here in 2000, 2001 where there was a significant tax increase and maybe that's leaving, you know, maybe we get a century of people in our voting contingent.
So do you want to do that by zero to five?
Yeah.
Don't they have?
Yeah.
A lot of times there's like a bar to just run the bar with electronic and you can just say, you can write.
Oh, that sounds really, really.
You're as long as 10, 10 to 21, 22.
There are five totals of codes in there.
We stalled, Jim, for you to get to that point.
Now, sir, they've had 25 questions.
I think you could replace the towns with zip codes. You'd have a little more precise information. I really liked your longevity of having lived in here. And whatever you want, whatever the ranges are, I don't care. But at least it gives you some idea of, you've been here a long time or, yeah, or like me, you've only been here 24 years. Oh, yeah. And I'd be curious whether there's some kind of trend there with the men.
The zip codes.
So we're back up to 15?
Yeah. We got to 10.
Oh, yeah. We got to 10.
All right, so can I go over really quick? Kind of where we are. The new one is how, well, maybe the new one, but it's easy that way. One, how long you reside in the district, we put some ranges in. We changed number four, I voted yes on the budget because, select all that apply. And then I agree with the decisions of district leaders. And then I voted no, select all that apply for number five. And then I disagree with the decisions of district leaders. Remove number 10, number 11, we put an other. Number 12 and number 13, we added the firm amount to answer. Number 14, we added, took out a different school and did a school outside the district.
For 13, do we have children? Do we want to have a way of speaking that? Is there a way to say that that doesn't imply parenting, but also is more?
How about, do you have children who attend or attended the district?
Then you have to, if they're graduated.
Yeah, see, that's.
Right. And the next question, if you did that, you'd have to write graduated. Say attend or.
Well, if it has children who are past school age. This is a suggestion. If the S. I don't know the language that goes with guardianship well enough to state that do you have children would be an appropriate way of asking the broader question.
Legal guardian or legal guardian of children.
How about we take out 13 and change 14 to, if you have children, where do your children attend school?
And then they'll have the answer saying, I don't know.
You don't need 13.
Right.
Yeah.
Or, but you have to say.
I don't think so, I have no children. I want a box.
Or, but if you said that, you'd have to say if you do have children, then yes, but if they're graduated children.
But that's the thing, it's like, if someone, if someone says, do you have children, your children have all graduated, then you miss the opportunity to answer number 14 more accurately, which is children who are past school age. So I think we should eliminate 13 or change it.
Right.
To include that. So I think that saying that if you have or have had children in your household, where do they or have they? But not, not like.
But if you have, if you are or were a parent, parent or guardian of a child, please answer the following question. Where has that child attended school? And then.
So if you are a parent or guardian, where do your children attend school?
Or have attended because it's past their age.
Can you answer that?
I'm going to have to.
Yeah.
Communication and I.
You wrote a 13 and modified.
More words than that.
So now we're done with other questions.
And then 15, we switch to zip codes. And then 16, we have any additional comments?
Perfect.
Use those zip codes. It won't be 16 anymore.
No, it's going to be 15. I'll make a number. All right.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our formal budget hearing.
Is this the last one before the vote?
Pardon me?
Last one for the vote.
It's the last one before the vote and then the information will be mailed after, published after.
Further regulations, we can't send out any notifications of the budget until after the final budget hearing. So it's all at the mailhouse, it's ready to go. We have to do this first and then we can send it out.
All right. Okay, so since you've been here for the past three meetings, this will look very familiar because knowledge has changed. The only budget takes we have left are tonight and next week. Revenue factors, state aid makes up a little over 25%. The tax levy in this board group version is slightly over 70%. But eighty-seven, uh, 2.5% increase of the levy, which is below our allowed amount of 4.16%. Other revenue is a little over 1%. Hasn't changed significantly. Federal revenue is only Medicaid, which is 1/7 of a percent. Allocated fund balance is 2.5% of the total, or $700,000. The current gap is zero. Of course, if there are any questions, please ask, as you go.
But Jim, I just, just for statement purposes and making sure we have it clear, is we could have taxed up to 4.5%.
4.16.
And we didn't, we went well under at 2.5.
Correct.
And I think that's a point that is important to note over and over again, that we're not going to the max of the 2% levy. We're much, we're definitely well underneath that.
And another factor is our growth rate will allow the tax rate to generally stay under 1%.
So four is still growing, we're allowed it underneath the levy. So it's minimal impact compared.
The executive budget, well, the final budget, we figured it out. 7.26, $1 million in the final budget. There was about a $10,000 change from the executive to the final. Tax levy calculation, it is based on a capped CPI at 2%. The actual CPI for the period is 4.7%. So if we had been able to use that, the increase would have been up to 520,000 more or another 2.6% for the year. It's a, based on a basket of goods that really don't connect with what we do as a school district. So it's not a very good number to use. The tax cap information that we actually file, you start with the previous tax levy, you add the growth factor that's provided by the state, you apply the 2% increase. So the allowed increase before any exclusion was 3.71%. We're staying even below that at 2.5%. There is an exclusion for capital levy, including BOSI's capital. So our local share is allowed to be added in. That's $85,000. So the total is a little over $20 million that we wouldn't be allowed to, but we're not going near that. We're increasing by 2.5% and that rate will be less than 1% because of our value group. Other revenues, this one's actually going to change this upcoming year because of what the Fed is doing. Interest earnings will start moving ahead, we believe, based on their changes. And this number may become a little more significant in the future. But this next year, we don't want to overstate it because we don't know exactly how it's going to fall. Federal revenue is just Medicaid. Services provided to students that we are allowed to be reimbursed. Federal aid from the ARP has been accounted for and applied for and approved. This is significantly less than the amount we got this current year. This current year was 1.1 million, now it's about 300,000. That's the last of the monies that come from COVID.
It's restricted or not restricted?
It's. There are restrictions on it. They're very, I want to say loose, but they're able to be worked with restrictions. So.
So just, so our social worker and our AAS support, those are, I mean, that's all about $140,000. So that's the main component of what we're utilizing those funds for. And Jim, I didn't know that we used a couple of other things that I can't off the top of my head know we did.
I believe social worker was the, I think we were putting nursing in there as well because that was a.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
And you can also do the benefits, which is additional above and beyond that. So that eats up pretty much the whole.
It's, in the grand scheme of things, it's not a ton of money because it only really benefits a couple of staff members with $250,000. Unfortunately, that's kind of the rub on that. But, sorry.
And not recurring?
Right, it's done, that's it. So if we were to, so we have to account for those and keep those positions in the following year. So we have to account for those and plan accordingly in our five-year plan because we don't want to stop our social emotional growth that we're doing in our districts. We want to continue our social work. We want to continue that support for our kids. But we also have to be wise and say, here's what our trends are. Here's what, you know, the feds are giving us, I mean, what we're getting from the state this year. We then know that, you know, the gross domestic product just dropped. We also know that, you know, there's a possible recession. At least we have to be careful, but we have to, you know, plan accordingly so we're not, you know, losing program or putting a huge burden on our debt.
So to put together an expensive budget, you start generally with the rollover budget. You adjust services and items, staffing, the employee benefits information, and debt service items that will be added. Items that were added.
So I'm going to, just real quick again, just to, Jim and I know that we do this all the time to each other. We start this process in October and we're looking at everything from our facilities all the way to our curriculum, our programs, you know, our current numbers, our projected enrollment. And we work with our administration and all of our different people. So this isn't something that happens, you know, in February. We start this process September, October. And then by November, December, we have an outline of a plan. We just don't know of the funds or any of the other aspects that go.
So there'll be more details on some of the benefits of these on the next screen, but maintenance contract for our telephone system, uh since we switched over to a new system. Problems have been creeping in, in places that we hadn't expected, so we wanna have a maintenance contract so we can cover all of that. Needed maintenance projects at all buildings, including security work, network, networking, yields and athletic maintenance, camera upgrades, and a hundred thousand dollar capital outlay project. This next year, it's planned to be focused on the middle school, high school campus, because last year it was focused on the elementary.
And again, those are expense-based aids, so if we do a hundred thousand dollar project one year, we get a portion of that back. So it's, it makes it actually less, and it makes it very sustainable then to keep up, upkeep of our facilities.
Approximately two thirds coming back, so. Uh, new reading program at the elementary school and the training to go along with that. BOSI services, including a technology installment purchase, which we'll talk about in the next slide. Technology upgrades as well, devices and that, and replacing the pool timely equipment, because that's how it pays now. Um, since we share that pool with Gilderland, they'll pay half, we'll pay half, as it works, works out. Benefits of these changes. We talked about the new maintenance projects, the new reading, um aid and all their, whether, literacy levels. Do that by fact, yes. Uh, for all students, which impacts all subjects and professional development for the program to make it effective, another twenty-five thousand dollars. BOSI's installment purchases, that we've been talking about a little bit, because the one-to-one program is part of that. Uh, is replacing uh interactive displays anywhere there are and putting them new wherever they're not. Uh, in all instructional spaces, new computers to replace six-plus-year-old devices that we had. Bring us to the ability to implement one-to-one. New computers, because they're six, not like five years old at this point, they're ninety-six when we had the place. Improved large spaces on the campus, including the PAC and the elementary school large gym, to make them more multimedia friendly. And that's paid over five years, and that will give us money in the budget, so we can continue onward to replace technology in a cyclical way going forward. Staffing changes.
Jim, you wanna take this one?
Yeah.
Alright, so.
Well, since, since, yeah.
Yeah, so we are adding an additional person at our elementary school. Currently, our numbers, so we're adding a teaching assistant, so every room in our kindergarten classroom will have a teacher and a teacher assistant. Which not every place has that, so it's, it's that divided attention to those students, that's important, giving them in an early age. Um, we had a kindergarten section added at the elementary school. Right now, we're at eighty-five, so I think that's gonna go. Um, we are looking at how we can, it means that we're gonna keep it, but we're looking at adding another section of a teacher, because our numbers, we're at, we have twenty-one students currently in our elementary school with eighty-five. We're making five sections of that, which will bring seventeen students in our elementary school per classroom. Our first grade, we wanna keep our sections low, so we'll have eighteen students in a classroom, five sections. Second grade, five sections, that's twenty, third grade, five sections, twenty. Fourth grade, we're, we're still at four sections, and that's about twenty-four students, which is right now where we typically are. And then fifth grade is at five sections, this is the max of what we currently can do, because we don't have the space to do anymore.
How many are in the fifth grade classes?
In the fifth grade class, we have, oh my goodness, one hundred and five kids.
Next year's fifth grade.
Next year's fifth grade.
Wait, how many per class? Twenty-six.
It'd be twenty kids per class, twenty, twenty-one.
There's room for growth.
There's room for growth. So, so what we're looking at those, what we know and what we see in the part of our trends are. We've seen that we start off at eighty-five ninety, we end ninety-five ninety-eight. Every, every grade level, we've seen an increase of at least four. So we know that we're gonna see more increase.
So you're saying the current second grade now, which is costing of the teams, next year is gonna get an extra?
Yes.
Cause that's wonderful.
Yeah, so Mr. Vavensy has worked with um his team at the elementary school's building leadership team. And they've really developed a sound way to be able to keep our class sizes low. Um, really need to need persons, because we know, I say this over and over again. If we're gonna make any impact and have our students reaching high, high ability levels when they reach high school, we have to put that in in our elementary school. That's where it's done, early intervention is key. Um, so our class sizes are low, and you know, they're better than what they are now. You know, if we keep this program and we're still doing it at a very fiscal rate, and if you saw the transparency report, we, we spend under what majority of districts do in the state, and we're still offering our program. So I think, you know, that's, that's a pretty sound thing that we're doing.
And great, how was the middle school number?
Uh, the middle school numbers, I don't have off the top of my head, but we could talk to curriculum meeting. So I, I don't, I wouldn't be able to speak to that.
You go back and tell me, kindergarten, how many are you projecting for kindergarten?
Currently, we have eighty-five students in kindergarten. When I talked, a month ago, we were at seventy-five.
Right.
So we're projecting that we'll probably get another nine, you know, five to nine. Our original projection was a hundred and twenty, as part of the enrollment.
Remember one sixteen?
Yeah. It was the projection, but we're not really meeting where we thought, you know, the enrollment was, but that is because we talked to a few families. And they're keeping their child out another year, we have some like birthdays in September and October, and they're choosing not to send their child. So we are seeing some of that as well. And then the point six business teacher middle school in the high school and a point four teacher aid coverage. That's gonna allow for, um, class coverage is in the middle school to account for some of the large group that we're having come up from fifth grade. And it will also allow for us to be able to offer um our STEM programs consistently each year. So we're not out from one year, then when class sizes go down, we cut them. Cause that's been something we've done based on the ability to do that and staff it. So we wanna have that staffing ability to continually offer STEM programs.
But originally, you had said for an elementary primary school too.
That's, that's still there as well.
Oh, okay.
So employee benefits.
I have one more thing, sorry.
Yep.
I just wanna make sure we cover it all. Um, we didn't, we didn't go over the bigger issue with the facilities, and I just wanna make sure that we, we know that we are putting a large project in for the resurfacing of the track, which was due last year. So we budgeted for the resurfacing of the track and our tennis courts. Um, you know, it does, again, there's giant cracks going through the foundations, actually becoming, you know, unsafe at some point, so we're having that redone too. That's a large portion of where um, of that facilities upgrades that we have to do, but we don't wanna defer that means it's created a bigger issue for the district. Sorry, Jim.
Employee benefits, uh this is mostly information provided by other people. So the ERS rates come out, the average out lower this year, thankfully, um eleven point two average. The maximum teacher's retirement uh contribution has been projected at ten point two nine percent. Workers' comp is projected to go up above two percent, that's based on past history and based on costs. Uh, health insurance and RX are projected to be flat in the budget overall. There are slight increases in some uh, one of our programs and in all balances. No significant changes in employee benefits overall. Debt service, we have a new payment coming on, because we finally went to long-term debt for our current project. Uh, the difference is part of the tax cap calculation that we mentioned before. We always borrow on a schedule to line it up with payments, so they come in at the same time or make the payments, so that we can offset essentially two thirds of debt service, but stay. Summary, those two numbers are very similar, twenty-eight, one-four-six, six-one-one, um go expenses and revenues. Project revenues, assume the below tax cap increase of slightly under five hundred thousand dollars. Because of significantly increased state aid, foundation aid, fifty percent due amount, we base our schedule to give us the other fifty percent next year, let's hope that continues off. Allocated fund balance is seven oh three, projected gas above zero, so we said all along. That's it.
Any questions?
Frank, you made mention of that transparency report.
Yes.
Which was very favorable to us. It looks like we're doing a really good job with results and keeping our cost down.
Yep, the state transparency report came out, those are the things that were in.
So that was really a, something we should be.
We should be proud of it, because as, as time goes on, you know, we need to make sure that we're, we're being fiscally sound.
Right.
And, you know, considering, you know, our taxpayers pay for a majority of what we do, you know, it's nice to see that we're, we're doing, meeting the needs of our students, continually do that and still keeping a debt level.
Well, on the build on that, what you guys have put together this budget, which I think is very sound, is in coming in at two point five instead of what we could have gone to. I'm sure there are districts throughout this state that are going all the way to the max on their cap, and we're not. And I think particularly now with the economic conditions and inflation and such, now for us to acknowledge that you say the CPI is a bad measure, and it is for, for those of us who are putting out surveys, but if you're thinking of what can a household afford? Okay, you see, guys, not such a bad measure, not a great measure, but it's actually two point five, it's way below inflation right now. So I think we're being extremely frugal uh and getting good bang for our bucks, so I'm, I'm a little proud of this budget.
But on one hand, I totally agree, and I wanted to say that we are in a very different position than most districts, because we have so much growth that we have the ability to have income at a different rate than someone, than a district that is um contracted perhaps, or not growing as.
Kind of rare and upstate to be growing, um I agree with that, uh so I'm happy to see that we're keeping this uh.
It's a good budget.
It's a good budget. Valid.
Are we allowed to say that?
Yes.
At this point, I hope you would be. Yeah, at this point, I hope you would be saying that at this point, as we're at the budget.
We're gonna approve it.
Yeah, so, yes. Okay, any other questions or?
No, thank you, Jim, for all of the trouble.
Yes, Jim, thank you, it's phenomenal.
And, and again, from starting the process so long ago and just keeping us updated, not just right at the last minute.
Yeah, and Frank says, October, for me, it's July one.
It starts October for me.
Yeah.
July starts for Jim.
Alright, sorry. There you go, okay. Superintendent's report?
So I really don't have a ton, because we've really been focused on this. And um, you know, but the one thing I do wanna say is last week was teacher appreciation week. And, you know, really, it's staff appreciation week across the board, you know, we couldn't open or be here, and our teachers couldn't do an amazing job if we didn't have our custodians here to open our buildings. We didn't have our bus drivers here to bring in our students, we didn't have our food service here, that, you know. We, it's a, a building, but it's a family, and it's the only way that we can run, so they did an amazing job. Our PTAs helped support them with a, a nice lunch for everybody. Um, you will see pins, it's a small gesture, um but I got a pin for everyone in the district of Voorheesville. The um, you know, what I am gonna be doing is I'm gonna do this each year, so it's gonna kind of be like Disney, the Frank McCreary special edition. To see how many pins, but it's just a small gesture that I gave out to staff, and I want you also to have to show our unity for what we do for our community. And um, that's really what this stands for. That is really all I have. Is this?
Thank you.
Oh, and hiring. On the back of the budget, on the back of the budget hearing, it does say that we're looking for custodial, maintenance, and transportation staff. Um, we still really need those people, um so we're here, we'll see it on the back of that, but that we are plugging that as well, sir.
And if you know a finance clerk, I'll take one.
Yep.
Recruitment number one. Okay, so. Okay, for, let's move on to minutes of regular meeting, may I motion to move that? For a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, alright, so let's group these action items, and I'll come back to personnel. So five point one to five point one oh, treasures report, personnel. Um, CSC recommendations, BOSI sublists, action on resolution appointing personnel for school library budget, vote and election. Memorandum of agreement with UEV, with BTA, bids for produce out of chem, student field requests, and the contract for kids club. Um, but before we vote, under personnel, we do have a retirement of Mary Kelly after eighteen years. You know, both my kids have, ours is excellent. And then we have two ten years, I don't think that our ten years folks are here, Kelly? Nope, okay, so hopefully they'll watch, and um I'd just like to mention each one. First of all, we have Monica Forla's physical education teacher. Thank you, Monica, for all you do, and we really appreciate and welcome you coming here.
She's coaching the girls across team.
Okay. Go Birds! Okay. And then um Melanie Nadowski, teaching assistant. Um, again, um congratulations, Melanie, and your tenure is very special, and we um appreciate and congratulate both of you, again. Ten years, that's right. Okay, so anyway, um may I motion five point one to five point one oh?
I, I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
One of them, only cause I have asked every year when it comes up. Uh, the, the bids for produce, how many did you get? Oh.
Two.
Two.
Competition, that's a first.
I knew it would pay off, asking, I mean, every year it's been one. So that, that's, that's good, so you got somebody else to bid, was actually the most good this time.
So our prior vendor lost it last year to the new vendor, who lost it to the prior vendor this year, so they're going back.
Competition's good.
Competition is good.
Awesome.
Any other questions? Okay, may I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so moving on to old business, um audit committee, audit committee's been very busy, I see, and we'll be discussing several, um oh, I'm sorry. Policy. Audit committee, sorry, our.
We did not, we'll meet next month before our meeting.
Okay. Well, audit committee's been very busy too, so.
There's some stuff in the works.
Yes, indeed.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Alright, curriculum committee, um.
Dill, uh we did not meet in April, but we have a meeting on May twenty-fourth.
May twenty-fourth, okay, and what time is that?
Three thirty, I believe.
Three thirty, okay.
Usually, I'll have to check for sure.
We thought there was one that had a time change, but it's not been there. Okay, thank you.
Three thirty.
Three thirty, okay. Facilities committee.
We're gonna stick with that theme, it's a theme.
Okay, when is your next meeting?
Tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow, facilities at tomorrow, what time?
Four, four o'clock.
Four o'clock, okay, so, facilities has been very, very usually, I think, all the committees have, so thank you for, to all the chairs especially, and policy now, wait, wait.
Policy, um, policy met twice.
Wow.
So, we, we haven't been uh able to report as much, but we met on April sixth and then May fourth. And I'm going to just clump everything together, because some of it is things, and, and I wanna just point out, some of it are things that we're going to discuss, hopefully, as we move through the rest of the agenda. Uh, we covered the fourteen hun, policy number fourteen hundred, which discusses public complaints, and we looked at that and provided basic revisions. Um, we also looked at fourteen oh five, which is a new policy for our district. And we decided that it is worth bringing to the board for a first read, if the board would like to redo a first read and then potentially move to a full adoption. It is complaints on federal funding, it's a relatively straightforward policy, but we have not had it. And it seems like we might as well add that to our um book of policies, it has some value to it, we felt. Uh, fourteen twenty is a policy on complaints about curriculum, which NISBA brought forward, and we also recognized it as something very timely. We looked it over and we bring forward the policy with revisions. Then we have policy twenty-one sixty, which is a code of ethics, and that's something we wanted to discuss as a school board. The policy committee felt that there were two items, particularly the first item, which discussed the value of gifts that could be accepted. And the eighth item, which um looks at potential participation on other charitable organizations by board members and district employees and so on. That code of conduct, I'm sorry, that code of ethics is something that the entire, it covers uh district employees and board members. Uh, moving forward, we also looked over policy twenty-one eleven, which covers board member authority. And we found some very basic revisions on that. We really did feel that our policy that as it exists is a strong one, and we thought it served us better than the NISBA recommendations. Although NISBA does have good recommendations in general. Um, moving forward, twenty, uh fifty-one fifty-two is a policy that Frank brought, brought forward very wisely. It's on foreign students, and we reviewed it, and then we talked to Jim about it, and we had some interesting questions about the different classifications for foreign students, F-one versus.
Foreign exchange.
Foreign, I'm sorry, foreign exchange students, oh my, sorry, I, I made up my notes. That sounded really awkward, I apologize for that misstatement. Yeah, I was looking at faces, I was like, it's so confusing, it's foreign exchange students. So yes, it's foreign exchange students, my, my misstating, I'll use bright red right now. Um, so it's foreign exchange students, Frank brought that forward, that foreign exchange students come on different um visas, and the policy covers the differences and provides some distinction between them, but in general, covers a po, a policy for the district. If we have foreign exchange students, uh so this is brought forward to the board for a first read. We also have policy forty-eight ten, um which we discussed in policy committee, we are not ready to bring it forward to the board. It is a policy about teaching, about controversial issues, and we want to talk further with attorney before we continue to review it, and then we would assumedly bring it to the board at that point. We additionally looked at. We additionally looked at policy 6680, which is, um, our version looks at capital assets. And the NISBA version looks at internal audit. And we thought that we should probably renumber ours to align and look over where the policies can be more streamlined. Our policy particularly, and we worked with Jim on that. Thank you, Jim, for your help. And so we're working on, on that. We have not yet brought that one forward to the board. But look for it soon, perhaps, in another meeting. Um, we also looked at policy 2230, which is executive sessions. And we're holding that one over for the June policy meeting. Again, look for it perhaps in another meeting. And we're also in June planning to look over the, um, to address the code of conduct. As Frank pointed out, we review that annually and adopt it annually after it is given a public review. So as a, um, policy committee, we'll look at that over at our next meeting. So we've had two meetings, um, April 6th and March 4th. And now we bring all this to you for discussion and for first read and also for adoption if it so serves the board.
So the only one that, see, I mean, the ones for vote, um, on the agenda, 7.1, 7.2, 7.3, were just, you're, what you explained, you basically.
Yes, basically.
So they're ready for vote. Um, 7.4 would be ready for vote if there weren't any questions, correct?
Right, or, yes. Uh, the 7.4 is the 2160. It's the school district. It's the code of ethics. And Frank heard back from the attorney today and he informed the policy committee that, um, the section eight, which discusses the participation in other organizations, specifically on the board or as an officer of another organization, should result in recusal from, um, activity as a board member or perhaps as an employee, et cetera. I, I'd say more as a board member. So that was, that was section or item number eight in the policy 2160 is the way it should be as it sits now. So the real question there is item one, well, we could discuss it. But we also have the attorney's advice and that might be of value to me. Um, item one though is the size of the gift and it legally has been set at 75. The district had it at 75 for as long as I can recall. And the question is, um, when we want to get to that point, will we discuss it unless we're doing it now, which is totally fine.
Yeah, I'll give it kind of rules. Well, it's fresh, honey. There's so many on here.
The question was raised, is, is $75 gift appropriate? And it would be, just to understand, that $75 would be a gift from a single family unit, we could say, to a single teacher over the course of a course year. So, and it would not be an anonymized class gift or school, you know, district-wide gift to a person that people can make their own donations and here it is aggregated. It would be a single gift. Here's, you know, I don't know what would be a great gift. But it would be a large gift from a single family to a teacher.
Can I make an example?
Absolutely.
Um, one, like, let's say we have a class gift and, and the kids all get together and every, the teacher gives $15 and they buy a classroom table for $250 and they donate it to the school, not the teacher. That's absolutely acceptable. Even if they were to give the teacher a $100 gift card, if every single family only put in $10, that's also acceptable. Um, but it really comes down to, let's say, a board member or myself. Let's say someone wants to give me, um, tickets to a Yankee game. Well, I can accept, I can accept those, but I'll have to write a check for whatever it doesn't cover the $75 because it's up to. So it doesn't mean that we're going to make you give gifts to 75. It just means that you're, you give the opportunity to give up to $75 individually. You can't do any more than that. So if someone wants to give me a Yeti, like I had a company once before, they gave me a Yeti with $25, I can absolutely accept that. If they want to give me 10 Yetis, I could not, or I could accept it, but I'd have to write a check afterwards. So that's kind of a nuts and bolts of it.
So the question is, is that an acceptable amount? Or are folks concerned that that might be too much of an amount? Um, and I sit back and say, how often does that even happen?
Does anybody track that? Maybe that's more of it. It's like, if people are accepting gifts, how is it?
We make it clear with 75, but we haven't had any control over that as far as, I know.
It is the law. Uh, I think we have a solution looking for a problem. Um, and, uh, so I would just leave it as it is.
Yep. So I was the one who raised it and.
Thank you for owning that.
Yeah. No offense to any teachers. But, you know, when I was a public officer, it was $15, basically was the limit, right? And you, you could not accept a gift more than that. Even if you were, you know, I was attending, let's say I went to a conference and they did a happy hour where there was nice drinks and food. If it's a conference, it's a widely attended event. If it was a party, let's say where there could be a concern that it was intended to influence some official action that I could take, then I could not accept it. And, you know, I think, I'm not saying we have parents who aren't well-intentioned in giving gifts to teachers. I think most parents want to show appreciation for the teacher and that's why they're giving a gift and, you know, some hopefully nominal amount. But I think for some families, you know, the expectation that you could give or some people are giving perhaps up to $75 a year to a teacher, particularly for families who have a lot of children, it can add up. And I, I just think it's a, it's a, compared to a public officer law, it's a big number. It's five times the amount of public officers. So I thought it was worthy of discussion as to whether that's an appropriate amount, is the amount that the board's comfortable with.
And I know in healthcare, in hospital, if you're an employee, it's like $10 or, you know, it's like a box of candy or something like that.
So that's, that was the point was, I, I felt like we should talk about whether that's, that amount is too much.
I think it's fine.
Yeah, I have never, I, I don't know. I remember like more like everybody would, when my kids were going, well, we, well, like give $5. You know, it didn't add up to much. I mean, that seemed like the general thing to appreciate the teacher. I mean, I don't think 20 families are all giving that stuff.
No, but you could, you could have a family giving significant candy. You know, I think $75 is a lot more. Yeah, you could and, and there are, there are donations. I still think it's a lot. But when, when class gifts are given, at least at the elementary school level, they're anonymized completely and no family is, is very made clear that, you know, donations are required or request. It's a, almost not.
And it's from everyone.
A donation or, or call it a donation, a gift being made outside of that context. No, there is not, but it is explained that this is a class gift. And if there is, it's usually one of more of a sentimental nature. You know, like a, you know, the apple mug kind of thing.
I always thought it had nothing to do with teachers. I always thought it had to do with school board members, school administrators. There is a, the potential for a quid pro quo. We could decide something that would be influenced by this donation. Frank goes to some lavish dinner, goes to the Yankees and all of a sudden we're paid him with this buddy, you know, whatever. But as long as you are not doing those things and you're being honest about it, and I think we all are. Nobody's offered me anything.
I know.
But, uh, so I would say, obviously, I don't think we have a problem. And I don't think it's the teachers that are the ones that we should be worried about. We gotta, let's make sure we all stay on the, the straight and narrow and I think we'll be fine.
I'm not suggesting that there's anything that's there that's going on.
Okay.
All I'm saying is.
It's in the power, it's a policy.
Is.
Yeah.
It's a decent chunk of money.
Yeah, but I don't think it's happened.
How comfortable with the 75 law?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's a good discussion right now.
Yeah, I, I appreciate it being played.
Yeah, I do, I don't think this is ready though, because there were other things that we had talked about. Like the way the NISBA policy was written, it was one complete policy, whereas ours is broken up into individual sections.
We can take it off and revisit it in June.
I, I think we should because there's also language in there about, um, accepting a gift, um, not to exceed 75 if it's intended to influence. I think we need to look at that section too and make sure it says what we wanted to say. The way I read it, it read to me like you could accept a gift that exceeds 75 so long as it wasn't.
It's sentimental and, yeah.
And I think we need to make sure it's clear.
Would it make sense to go through these that are being proposed for action one by one? Or do you want to do this in some consecutive?
No, I, I have it, the three that are only small.
I've lost track of where we are.
No, I got, I kind of have it there. So we're going to take this one away.
So, well, yeah, let's omit that and I'll put it on my list for June.
And then bring it back.
We can revisit that.
Okay.
This is a new policy or already good?
2160 exists.
So number eight already exists.
Number eight already exists in our.
Oh, it's a public state that I never said in writing I'm on a board of another terrible.
I don't think we actually have, that's not been situated in our former policies.
We need to go over that too because I have the.
That hasn't been stated in previous policies. That's new in this policy. As far as I can.
I think it's probably true of that.
Yeah, there's language about like disposing, but it doesn't say, it's not to that level of detail in writing. Right? Because we've had plenty of meetings where I've disclosed that a member of, from a board member of other organizations, they're huge.
Bring it back.
The actual procedure isn't, isn't it?
June.
Okay.
Okay. So, thank you, Rachel.
No problem. So glad.
And the whole committee for all the work. Yeah, that was a lot of, yeah. So we, okay, so the 7.1, 7.2, and 7.3, as Rachel mentioned, are all just simple revisions and ready for a vote. So can we get a motion to?
I'll move those three.
You move those three. And second?
Second.
Okay. So all in favor?
I guess we're gonna go through it. Okay.
Those three are, are all just minor revisions.
Oh, they're my, wait, that's what Rachel went through. They're all minor.
Sorry, those three were minor revisions to the language.
Like a, a second.
They could just be presented one by one. I would be able to follow the logic.
That was the 14, the 1400. Do you want me to?
No, I'm good.
Oh, I think, okay. I'm happy to talk policy.
Some policy. Okay, 7.4, we're going to take off, um, and revisit and bring, send it back to the House.
But it's good to have the understanding of the board for the size of the gift.
Absolutely. So you're bringing the whole.
Yeah.
Bring it back to the House.
Yes.
Put it back on.
Yes, we, we definitely.
At a future. Okay, now 7.5 and 7.6 are first reads, so we do not vote on those things.
Correct.
So you can read them and be prepared for the next time that they will, will vote on.
Yeah, it should be.
And 7.6, the language should read admission of foreign exchange students.
Yes, foreign exchange.
We're having a little language issue here. Sorry.
No problem. So those are first reads, um, people will be willing, and then next time, um, as long as there's no questions, then we'll vote on those next meeting.
Do we have to approve? Do we have to vote on them?
No, we don't have to vote. It's not a vote. It's first read and then vote the time of the next one. Gives people time to review.
Ask questions.
Okay, that was a lot of, a lot of files.
Thank you, Paul.
Yes, thank you, Paul. I always say that. That's our government. Okay, exception of donation. We, um, have 144, 4.50 for student associations, class of 2022 graduation ceremony. Ceremony backdrop, very generous. Can I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And again, thank you, um, PTA.
Can I say one thing about that? That backdrop can also be used for all events now. So it's like a Zeborezville Blackbirds event, so it's, it doesn't have the year on it. So not only did they grad, you know, donate it for the class of 2022, but now when we have any event where we have students in front of, we'll have a, a Zeborezville backdrop so they can take pictures. So it's pretty cool. So thank you to you.
Yeah, very much appreciated. Okay, opportunity for the board to be heard.
I have one thing, um, just to throw out there. I was wondering how people would feel on the board about adding back the second opportunity to, to speak at the end. Um, and I was trying to think back when I was in the public. I found it helpful to be able to speak again at the end because things come up. Did reading make you want to comment on that you would have known would want to comment on otherwise?
And it was, yeah, sorry.
And I just also do recall though at a time, it kind of was getting out of control and adding to, really make really long meetings, um, which is why I'm assuming it was really when it was removed. But now we have this new three minute per person. Maybe we could give it a try, see if it's manageable. If not, it's not. If other people agree, just throwing it out there.
Some, some history on my, um, it was taken out. They said, yes, the board, and you were, you were part of the, like.
I was on that side.
Yeah, you on that side. But, um, yeah, the, we were getting, even from a lot of public people attending is that, you know, they came to hear the public, um, the board business and these readings were like going on and then on and on and on. And then we started looking at them and public comment were, sometime we had both, you know, were longer than the board business itself. And so we had, at that time, we had, um, and, and we weren't getting through all the board business. That was the big thing. And of course, the main.
Right.
Part of the board meetings, although we encourage, um, public comments to get through business. Um, so we had people from BOSI's actually come in, attend a couple of meetings because it was becoming such an issue. And, um, the recommendation then was that, like, we were one of the only schools that had two. Some don't have any, and you know, some schools you write ahead of time or you only discuss what's on the agenda. Um, but two were like just that unheard of. So that's when it was recommended to put public comments at the beginning before the superintendent's report. As many times the superintendent would be touching on it or then he would be, or she would be able to note what to follow up on and, you know, for the next meeting. Um, but I agree, at that point also, we had no, people would talk five, 10 minutes and we did not have that three minute, you know, please, it was always in our, you know, in the introduction. In what, and with, for the main reason is to give other people a chance to, to also speak up there. Um, but we never enforced it or timed it for the two to three minutes. And then, just went with it. And then we tried, I remember we did try for the final one. It's the only comments we would hear were something we discussed at that me, at the meeting. Not new information, because that's not really clear. They all of a sudden, it's the last thing on the agenda to the superintendent. Um, but rather would be more comments on something that was discussed at that meeting. And that, that seems reasonable to me. I mean, to introduce new things that, you know, when you have plenty of time at the beginning, something not on the agenda is one thing. That's where it got off.
Specific agenda either.
Specific agenda.
Discussing the meeting.
So, right, so it's specific agenda. So, so for example, if somebody had a public comment on, let's see, a public comment on.
Gifts to teachers.
Gifts to teachers. Thank you. Whatever. This would, this would be the time. Or on, um.
The PTA banner.
PTA, yeah, something, or the budget hearing, you know, because this would be.
Or the one-to-one or.
The one-to-one. This would be the time. I think, um, it becomes, I think at the end of the meeting, the comments become more, um, more people get up to make a comment when there's something that's new or controversial. So brought up, you know, in more detail at the board meeting and what they're, so.
But if there's the three-minute.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
I think that has value and I, I do, I do, I appreciate that you brought up that we had clarified that that second opportunity to be heard would be limited to material covered over the course of the board meeting. And in, in a way, it seems like it would be, if everyone was in agreement, it would be an opportunity to see if that was something of value.
Right, I mean.
To try, to try it out again, see how close.
I think, I think the key is to, you can keep that two to three minutes, because.
Yeah, well, to time, to have a timer, but also to, to clarify that this is a meeting of the board that happens in public, and the opportunity for the public to be heard is, it's not meant to be a town hall, it's meant to be some, some communication, but it's also not meant to be a two-way communication, it's just to be heard, not to be discussing.
Listen, to be heard, right.
And if there's something to follow up on, Frank's been amazing at following up, and we're always happy to get emails and.
And that's where you don't want to put like something new throw that at eight thirty at night, that's, it's not fair.
No.
You know, but if it's something that was discussed, then just.
Yeah, follow up.
Yeah.
Does it make sense, though, to bring this up, so, we're, we're coming up to a new year, so, right? Which is generally, we take a look at how we run our meetings, how we keep up all sorts of stuff, whether it's at the reorg meeting or whether it's in retreat, which is where like this decision got me.
Yes, like a retreat, it's a retreat.
In the first place, right, so, I'm just wondering if.
Yeah, we don't, this, this side tonight, I just.
From that item inside of, have an ad hoc agenda item at the moment, makes more sense to, you know.
Discuss.
And we'll have at least one new board member joining us to maybe.
Yeah, no, totally.
Just maybe it makes more sense to, to do as part of that process that we do.
Yep. And that's where this came from, to change in the first place, so that, this would, it's a very good way to, to discuss it, and, you know.
Only other thing I would add as a board member is I want to thank the PTA for having put on the candidate tonight forum. Did a great job, uh, I thought all the candidates did a really super job answering questions, the questions were great. You looked really good on screen. And, uh, but it was, uh, it was done very professionally, everybody was right on target, and, uh, now that thing, that thing could go wild, and it didn't, it was done very well, and I was, I was really impressed, so, as a community, I think we represented well. Well, thank you, PTA.
Yes.
Thanks for that.
Any other board comments? Okay, well, I'll just say happy birthday to Tim, thank you for sharing your day, um, at our board meeting.
I'm still sixty something.
Okay, there you go. Okay. All right, well then, may I have, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Second?
Second.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, well, oh, sorry, sorry, I'm sorry, just remember. Just remember, um, Monday, May nineteen is seven fifteen AM.
Monday? Wednesday?
Seven fifteen AM, special meaning.
Thursday? Thursday, May nineteen?
Oh, it says Monday, I didn't look in calendar.
Because Tuesday is the seventeen.
Right, yes, so it says, okay, so, excuse me, that would be after, so Thursday, May nineteen, will that, can that be virtual, I mean? It's like seven fifteen AM.
Yes.
No, this.
That's too exciting.
We did post these, right? So, um, it can be virtual, will there be a forum?
I think I can do it, I think it should be virtually, but I won't be here.
Well, you can do it virtually, yeah. Okay, so we'll have a forum, I'll just confirm that, and again, the next, um, the next board meeting is Thursday, June nine, after that.
June what?
Nine.
June nine.
And we have audit before that, right?
Yep.
So, audit before that, six o'clock, yes? Six o'clock, June nine. Okay, so.
All right.
Okay, so thank you, everyone, thank you for joining us, and have a good evening.